Good evening and welcome to the June 4 regular meeting of the Oyster River School Board. We'll begin the meeting as usual with the approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve? Denise, thank you. And a second. Sean, thank you. Does anyone have any additions? I do have some additions. We are going to add two non-public sessions to the end of the meeting, both under RSA 91-a-three-two-C. Any other adjustments? Okay, all in favor of the agenda as amended? One, two, three, four, five, six. Six in favor. Thank you. We have time now for public comment. Is anyone here for public comment? Please step forward and I'll just ask you to state your name and the town that you live in.
Elizabeth Lund. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So Claire Powell, right there, and I wrote letters to the school board and hopefully you received them yesterday and today. And we're referring to Ashley Getman, who is a general para at Moheramet, but she's really working as a library para. And I think that she was informed that she was laid off. And so we wrote some letters in support of her. And I don't want to bore you with reading the whole thing, but you should have them right there. And what I just want to mention is she specifically knows the library really well. And she works with the school librarian and they both strive for excellence. And she works in a lot of capacities, but one is she suggests new books, she updates the records, she repairs books, she decommissions old books, she compiles books for teachers' special projects. And she knows the whereabouts of the many thousands of books, so she's a great reference for the students. And she also checks out the books when students come in and she greets all of them with smiles and she knows their names and she's warm and friendly. And one of the main things that she does is we're volunteers, there's a whole system of volunteers in the Moheramet Library and we're not allowed to be there on our own. The library has to shut down when the head librarian goes out to the classrooms. So she frees up the librarian to go and do special projects in the classrooms. So basically what we wanted to say is, we know it's one of those last-in, first-out situations, but we think that she's really, really special. And if there's anything that can be done to preserve her job or make it more specifically as library para, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes from May 21st. We have two sets of minutes. We'll begin with the regular meeting minutes from May 21st. Can I have a motion to approve? Denise, thank you. And a second. Renee, thank you. And any changes or corrections?
I have a very minor one on page seven, second to the last paragraph. And it says, oops, now I lost it, "When Heather is talking," it should say "lack of adequate space," not "inadequate space." We have plenty of inadequate space, but... I was waiting for Gianna because she usually hits them all. Alrighty, so all instances of "Mama," M-A-M-A, should be changed to "M-A-M-M-A," which is the show title, "Mama Mia." On page one, it says Stella wasn't present, but she was, she was, she was just a little late. On page four, I already sent these to Wendy, by the way. On page four, when listing the folks presenting about the cellphone, it said Suzanne, Bill, and Becca. It should also say Felicia Sperry. She was there. Page five, it says, under the superintendent report about notifying kindergarteners, it says Dr. Shapps has notified kindergarteners or kindergarten families. I would change that to district or principals. I don't care which, if people have a preference, because I think the principal sent the letter, but globally it is the district, but it wasn't Robert. So district? Alright, district. Page five, under the fiscal year '26, "General Assurances" conversation, Department of Edge should be capitalized in both times it's mentioned. It's not. And that was it.
Okay, I do have one. On page five and six, when we were talking about the general assurances, every board member has comments except for Gianna. And I know that Gianna did make comments during the meeting. I don't want to mischaracterize, but I believe Gianna was saying that even though the state made changes to the document, she felt that what they left in undermined those changes. Is that fair to say? And that that was still dangerous to sign the assurances the way that they were stated?
Yes.
Okay, so if we can add that in. Sorry to speak for you there. Any other changes? Okay, all in favor of the minutes as corrected? Six in favor. And we'll move on now to the non-public meeting minutes from May 21st. Can I have a motion? To, Denise, thank you. Motion to approve, I guess I should have said. And a second for that. Gianna, thank you. Any corrections to those minutes? Okay, all in favor of the minutes, the non-public meeting minutes? Five in favor and one abstention. Sean Harrison is abstaining. Thank you, sir. Alright, we'll move on to district announcements.
I have six announcements about all the different things that are happening in June. We've got a lot going on. It's very exciting. We did finish our year of journeys with our journeys of stuff in May. We sent flat Moheramets, like Flat Stanley, but we had a Ms. Trombley and a Mr. McGinnis and Nurse Kotelis and all sorts of people. We send them to every continent except Antarctica because they're closed for the winter. And we've been tracking them on a board in our hallway and on the map, the big world map at school, so students are really seeing how long it takes and the directions and the pathways that all this mail goes to get around our world. And we've also been investigating during lunch with all of the grade levels, all the different ways that packages get sent around the earth when we order things or when things come to us. And we've really been thinking about all of the things, the items that we have and how they get to us. It's been a great way to finish that year. We also had a World Music Assembly with Randy Armstrong to tie things together. Upcoming for this month, we have a number of things happening. We do have, and I know Misty and Bill will probably talk about it as well, we have fourth grade Step Up Day happening this Friday. Both fourth grades from Moheramet and Mastway will come here to the middle school and have the whole morning through lunch sort of being oriented to the middle school. When Moheramet students come back, the fourth grade family group, volunteer group, has organized an afternoon of celebration for them, which is a traditional activity at Moheramet. We have expression sessions, talent shows happening on Monday and Wednesday of the last week, the 16th and 18th of June. We have our new registered and enrolled kindergarten students coming to us on Tuesday and Wednesday, the 10th and the 11th, to do orientation. Students go into the library learning commons with the kindergarten teachers and other providers and do different activities. It helps us get to know them and it gives them an experience in our school. And I take the adults the hour and we have an orientation. The nurse comes in, our school counselor comes in, and I answer questions with them. And then two celebrations happening the last week. On the 17th is Mo Day, which is a traditional, like a traditional field day expanded at Moheramet. We do a lot of non-PE activities as well as field activities. We plant our pumpkins. We do things all around the school on the 17th. And then that evening is fourth grade recognition night at Moheramet, where we recognize our fourth graders as they head off to the middle school, which is a lovely evening that starts at 6:30. That's a lot of what's going on. Questions, comments, thoughts? Cool, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Ms. DeLo, Mastway School. Nice to see you all. I also have six announcements and some important dates. Some are common that David just shared, so I'll try to do this quickly. I just want to do a shout out for Trista Fitch and all the students and the greater school community of Mastway for a fabulous art show this year. I know our parents across the district had a very busy evening. We are committed to not double-triple booking parents the best we can next year, but we had Banda Palooza, Coffee House, art show at Mastway, so it was really an evening of celebrating the arts across the district, not just at Mastway. So kudos to everyone who worked so hard to provide those special events. I also wanted to share Friday night, this past Friday evening, our PTO put on a Mayfair and the community just always comes out so big. It's really enjoyable. It's just a night of enjoying our school community together. And the PTO raised over $5,000 and they always use that money to support our students and staff. I'm just can't say enough publicly about the good work that these parents do to support our school system. So thank you to the PTO. We also just wrapped up our spring testing today. Yay! So our students are finished with STAR, New Hampshire SAS, Acadia's testing, and I'm so proud of the student data that I'm reviewing. I'm hoping to spend some time during the teacher workshop day really celebrating with our teachers, our systems, our tier-one instruction changes that we've been making, and our interventionists and all the work they provide through our MTSS framework, our special educators. It shows I'm eager for you to all have an opportunity to see it. I'm really proud of our students and our staff. I also want to do a shout out to Ms. Farwell and Ms. Nary. Sarah Farwell is our math science specialist and Allison Nary is our literacy specialist, and they hosted a breakfast and brain boost event. This week, we invited families in for all K through 2 students who have received tier 2 or tier 3 MTSS supports in order to show some fun and engaging ways to reinforce foundational skills in math and reading over the summer, just to support that summer slide. So it's always fun to have parents come in, talk about our programs, our kids, our best practices for instructional practices, so that parents can carry that over at home. So that was a great turnout. I also have Haven comes to schools across the state. It's a wonderful program. And this year they had a contest, a design contest statewide. And I was just informed that a Mastway second grader won that statewide contest for a design for Haven that will be used next year on all the T-shirts, all of their brochures. They have like coloring books and other handouts. So Haven will be, I can't share the name yet because the student doesn't know yet, so it's going to be a big surprise. Haven's going to come back with their puppets, a special event, recognize the student, and the entire second grade class that this child's a part of is getting a free T-shirt with the design. So that was fun. Also, another shout out for, we have a new PE teacher, excuse me, Emma Houston this year is new to Mastway. She is not new to the district. She worked at the middle school for years, but she's new to Mastway School. I just can't say enough about what a wonderful job Emma is doing in that role. And an example of that is we have Field Day coming. It's a wonderful culminating event that we do school-wide, full school barbecue. It's a big undertaking to plan the Field Day, and Emma has done a terrific job of making sure, first of all, for the first time in my experience at Mastway, we're going to start with a full school assembly. And she's titled at "The Spirit of the Game," and it's really to cover all those SEL principles that we want to make sure, good sportsmanship and turn-taking and cooperation and all those important things that will happen through all the events of Field Day. So kudos to Emma for doing that. Some important dates, tomorrow's the Senior Walk. It's one of my favorite things. I get a little sappy and they're not even my own children, but it's so cool to see these kids walk through our halls in their caps and gowns. They look for those photos, those of you who have been in Mastway, those old pictures. They are looking for themselves. They want to show their friends what they looked like in fourth grade. The kids cheer, they make posters. It's really quite awesome. So thanks to Kim Casmas for organizing that. And I look forward to seeing the seniors come to Mastway tomorrow. As David mentioned, there's middle school Step Up Day. That's wonderful. We also will have two kindergarten orientation days at Mastway. We're doing the 9th and the 11th, so it's the same week, little bit different days. I look forward to welcoming in, is it the class of 2038 or something crazy?
Please don't say it.
We're going to say goodbye to 2025 and hello to some number that's hard to articulate. Fourth grade celebration at Mastway. We also, we have a breakfast. Our families come in. PTO sponsors a beautiful potluck breakfast. We celebrate our fourth graders, and then they're off to Newcastle for the rest of the day to celebrate. I've had two parents, literally, these are grown men, whose chins were quivering in my office because this is their second or third child, to go through Mastway. And they're like, "I can't believe we're leaving. This has been like 10, 12 years of coming through these halls and walking in this office." It's a little sad. They've spent a lot of time there. I'm sure they're equally excited, Mr. Sullivan, to come to the middle school. But it's kind of a final moment when that fourth grader is your last one and you've had several children come through the school. I know Moheramet parents feel the same way. It's hard to say bye and move on, but... And then our last day of school, I just want to remind parents it is a full day of school on the 18th, and I cannot believe how quickly that is coming. It's just such a bittersweet time of the year, but... Questions for me? Thank you.
Well, I'm sorry. I do have one. I'm sorry. I missed the date and time of the fourth grade celebration. I'm sure you said it.
The fourth grade celebration is on June 17th. I do not have the time in front of me. It's first thing in the morning.
Okay.
I would be happy to email you that. It is a breakfast. We actually start before school, so I want to say it's like 8:30.
Okay.
There's a slideshow and breakfast, and then we do the certificates. But I'm going to write myself a note to email you all, a specific time, if you're interested in coming.
Great.
Sorry about that.
Oh, no. Thank you very much.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Good evening. Bill Sullivan, the middle school. Going to recap a couple of great events we've had in the last couple of weeks and then talk about some things we have coming up. So we had a great talent show here. First time we've had a talent show in years at the middle school, first one in this building. It was put on by our student leadership group, and they did an amazing job. The kids obviously did an amazing, I mean, we have some talented kids. And we all know that from all the drama and the sports and the musical and everything we've got going on, the arts. But again, to see them in front of their peers, in front of families, showing off some things that, you know, we wouldn't see every day. So it was a great event, and I'm really happy that we got to showcase that for kids. We had Banda Palooza last week. It was an amazing event outside, another successful event. So that, you know, it's amazing how many kids and how loud and just the energy that can be generated on that field. So another great one for us. And then last night, we had our last chorus concert of the year right here. And that was great. It was a full house. We had, it was five through 12. Ms. Olberg did an amazing job with all groups, high school and middle, and had a couple songs where they were all together. So obviously that takes a lot of practice, a lot of time, choreography, and I give her a lot of credit for that. Coming up this week and next, we've talked about it a couple of times, the Senior Walk will be tomorrow. Yes, it will be emotional for some of us. As I have two coming through tomorrow, which will be my last two, so that'll be very exciting. And then Friday, we have our fourth grade Step Up Day, which will be awesome. They'll come in, get a tour, they'll have lunch here, play on our playground, get to meet some of the teachers, see their older brothers, older sisters, and get to just get a flair for what the middle school's going to be like next year. That's always an exciting day. June 11th, next week, the first thing we have is during the day, we have our eighth graders. They'll be heading up to the high school for their Step Up Day. I think they're doing that in the afternoon after lunch. So they'll get a flavor of the high school. They'll get tours, they'll talk to kids, they'll have opportunities to ask questions and get an idea of what it's going to be like to be a freshman in the fall. And then later that night, on June 11th, we have our fourth grade parent night, information night here. There'll be a lot of questions. You know, I always ask the parents, because I ask the kids, when I go see them at the elementary schools, who's nervous about going to the middle school? And I'll ask the parents, and I'll get just as many nervous parents. And I think we were all there at some point, for the most part, when our first kids were going to a new building, a new experience. So I talked through them with that and answer, again, answer a lot of questions and just try to relieve some fears that they'll have and give them an opportunity to speak and then let them know that anytime during the summer, if they want to come and check out the middle school, we're always here. They're always welcome. And hopefully they'll take me up on that. And then lastly, on June 17th, we have our eighth grade celebration. It'll be the last night of our eighth graders. They'll be here. We do a, at 5:30, we'll have the family on the, all the families on the field. We'll have the kids kind of walk through, kind of like a senior walk, where the parents will get to celebrate, cheer. We'll take pictures out on the field. And then the kids come in to a DJ. We have some cool, a very cool blow-up game the kids will love. Food and just a fun night for kids to hang out, eighth graders to hang out with their friends. And we all know that's what they love to do at this age, so we give them that opportunity, and it makes for a great night. And between now and then, we've got more field trips and activities planned. You don't have enough time to listen to them all. They're all during the days, and it's going to be a great next couple of weeks. Any questions? All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Rebecca Noe, principal at the high school. So first, I do want to announce that we were able to get the Whitmore Center for Friday night, so I sent a parent square out a couple hours ago to parents, and I forwarded that to the staff also. We are after Somersworth that evening, because we worked with UNH in Somersworth today to be able to do that. So parents will be allowed in the WIT at 8:00, and then we'll have the graduation ceremony starting at 8:30. So this way, everybody gets to see their senior graduate and we can celebrate them as they should be celebrated. So we're really happy to be able to do that for our seniors. Second, and our girls' track team won the D2 state championship this past Sunday, so extremely proud of them. It was a complete blowout, a lot of great performances and many awesome performances on our boys' team also. Our new student school board representative is going to be starting in July, so Elise Bacon will join you. She wants to start in the summer and not wait till fall. She's raring to get going, and so she will be here at the July meeting. We have our Senior Walk, as was mentioned, tomorrow, but we are actually adding something new, so the seniors voted to start their walk through the high school. We've never actually had them walk through the whole high school in their caps and gowns. So Kim Casmas planned, we walked the building and we planned out the route they're going to take. They will walk through the entire building. We're going to have the classes come out and cheer for them. And then they'll go to the field, take their class picture in their caps and gowns, and then head to the middle school and then off to the elementary school. So we're really glad to start that new tradition with the class of 2025. Tomorrow night on the 5th, we have the senior scholarship awards at 5:30 and senior awards at 7:00 PM. June 11th, we have Step Up Day, as Mr. Sullivan mentioned. The 13th through the 18th are final exams, so I've sent that schedule out a few times and will continue to send that out in the newsletter for parents and students for the final exams. And then on the 13th is Breakaway to Vacay. That is a specific event for freshmen. So the freshman class is on the field. There's games, there's food. It is from 6:30 to 8:30 on the 13th, and it is Friday, the 13th. The 18th is the last day of school. And then August 21st is Introduction to High School for Parents. That's at 5:00 PM, and that's administration and counseling putting that on. Then August 22nd will be the freshman orientation, and that is the Friday before school starts. And school starts the 27th, which is a Wednesday. Looking forward to 2026. Questions for me? Okay, thank you. Yes.
What was this year's senior prank?
Oh, so many. So they started off, some of them camped out on the baseball field. They cleaned up mostly after themselves, which was great. They came and drew chalk, like, how much seniors rule and juniors don't, and so those kinds of messages around the building, but a lot of positive about the seniors. Parking, we had the crazy parking. This is like the third year they've done that, so they kind of just park all over the grass, take up parking spots, add a desk in my spot. What else did they do? Oh, they came, so when we let them in, they came in and decorated the senior corps. I have to say, it was the best decorating job that we've seen so far because it really looked like a nightclub. They did a really good job, brought in their own speaker system, had the music blaring. They were really good. They did turn it down when school started so classes could keep going, so that was awesome. And then during Flex, they had a little mini parade through one of the hallways back down to the corps where they hang out, and they played music for Flex also. And then that was kind of it. So they did a good job.
I've got a couple of questions about graduation being moved to the WIT. Do you know offhand like how much it costs in order for us to hold graduation at the WIT?
So I can tell you what it cost about two years ago. So they're sending me an estimate tonight to figure, so I don't know if there's going to be a difference or not, but it runs almost the same as what graduation usually costs, about 15 to 16. So there's extra audio and things, so they're keeping someone on so that we can have it later. And so there's like audio, "We're not getting the Jumbotron." That would be an extra $1,000. There's things like that that we looked at. There's things we can still cancel. For example, we can cancel our police detail because we won't need Durham Police because they have their own that are there. So there are some things like that we'll be able to do.
Okay, because there's been discussions about this that have been here, and I just wanted to make sure that people understood there is an expense associated with it.
Yes.
And obviously, there's no capacity problem at the WIT, in which case there was at the...
Say that part again.
There's no capacity problem at the WIT, in which there was at the middle school.
Won't have to limit the number of tickets per family.
Oh, correct. Sorry. I just couldn't understand what you said. No, no tickets. So this would allow, where if we had it here, seniors, each senior would get four tickets for this room, because with the amount of seniors we have, that's what the room would allow. And faculty, we wouldn't have had faculty march in with them if we had it here at the middle school. And then there was extra seating, and the fire marshal was actually here with us talking. We have extra seating that would have been in the gym where other attendees could have gone. At the WIT, we don't need that. We don't need tickets. Everybody can come in. There's plenty of seating. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move on now to board announcements. If anyone, Denise, please.
So yes, to echo the principals, tons of wonderful activities. A couple I want to mention, the science showcase at the high school was incredible. The one about RNA just kind of blew me out of the water. I was like, okay, if you say so. But the other thing that I really wanted to mention was I had an opportunity to go to Moheramet to see their Forest and Nature journaling exhibit, and that was really cool. And it was just wonderful to see how the students, you know, just to learn to be peaceful in nature and observant. And, you know, I enjoyed, they wrote poems, they drew pictures. Just, it was really fun. So congratulations to Ellen Irvin and Chris Hall and the second and third grade teachers who did that project.
Do you have something?
Banda Palooza was awesome, as always. And I'm thinking about all the parents and the kiddos who are all having very big feelings this time of year with all the transitions. I knew the principal newsletters have been really great about reminding us that everybody's having big feelings and things may be disrupted because of it, but I know I've got two transitions and I'm having very big feelings. So sending lots of love to all the rest of them.
For folks who missed the Forest and Nature journaling at the school, Madbury Day is this Saturday, I believe, from 9 till 2, and the nature journaling stuff will be there as well. So if you missed it, you can go and also have fun at Madbury Day where there's a parade and food and a yard sale and me and a water resources table, so.
I just want to say, I was at the Banda Palooza also, in the Coffee House, which was another excellent coffee house, the senior art show. I'm glad that they left the stuff up. It just blows me away every year how talented the, all of the artists in the district are. But at the Banda Palooza this year specifically, and I don't know if it has to do with Band Bobcat, and I could be talking out of my butt, but the, excuse my language, the sound coming out of that group of players that had not played together as out of that group of players that had not played together as a group was incredible, full and it was just very, very impressive, so credit to the music department. And thank you. I don't need to turn that off. We will move on to the assistant superintendent's report.
I don't know, Alexander, if I need to do anything. Oh, there we go. Thank you. So this evening, what, what we will be presenting is about the high school specifically. We'll be talking about performance and personalization of studies for our students at the high school. Traditionally, what people have seen from me is a discussion about the whole district with some larger pieces of data. And so what I'm hoping to do moving forward is to break it up a little bit to be able to provide more, more information to people. So this evening is just about the high school and we will move on to talk about the elementary and middle school separately. So I've asked Becca to join me in this conversation. So what we will be talking about this evening is universal testing, so we'll be looking at some of our universal testing for the high school, which primarily is the SAT. We will, there's a little bit of SAS data mixed in when we talk about the class of 2025. And then we're going to talk more specifically about the SATs with some of the skills and the insights, and then discuss some of our focus areas moving forward based off of those, over those results. We would like to talk about personalization, that's a big part of this presentation as well, looking at opportunities for students outside of the walls of the building, but also within the walls and different layers of experiences that kids have had through things like early college and AP and other areas. And then we'll talk a little bit about post-secondary planning for past classes as well as for the class of 2025 and our future goals. So in looking at the SAT comparison, this is a slide that I traditionally present with other information, and what I've done here is I've pulled out the number of students that actually, the small numbers, the total number of students that are included in the testing. So we had 178 students in 2025 take the SAT. This is the junior year, so they're taking the SATs, their junior year. So our juniors this year, there were 178. Last year's juniors, which is this year's senior class, is a little bit bigger, there were 203 students. And then if, as you go over, you'll see the number for New Hampshire and then the national numbers, which you can see it's declining a little bit, the number of students nationally and the number of students that are, that are taking it. The reason why it is not repeated in the math is because it's the same number of total students. So that's why I don't have it repeated in the math area. But this gives you an idea of scores for reading and writing as well as math. The essay portion or the writing portion is outside of these scores, and I'm going to address, I'm going to talk about that separately because that's relatively new as far as standardizing that for all students within the state of New Hampshire and having more information around that. But this is, this is the reading and writing and the math scores. So one of the things that you can see is that there's a sort of a fluctuate, a little bit of a fluctuation here. And I know that, that you can, you can see it, it rising for our reading scores, you can see that it's increasing at this, New Hampshire also has numbers that are, over the last three years, that are increasing as well. And then the math is a little bit of a different story for us. And we're going to talk a little more about this, this, the specific skill areas within each of those tests. So this is the percent proficient. So this is within the state of New Hampshire, you, they go through the scores, just like the SAS scores, they do this with SATs, and they tell, they basically put information out there explaining how many students, the percentage of students that are proficient. So we don't have that data yet for 2025, we have it for 2024, 23, 22, and 21 is what's included. But you can see, the blue is Oyster River and the green is the state. And so for, for us, we're seeing again some fluctuation with our percent proficient, but it's relatively stable over the last three years. This year, again, with math, we see a little bit of a, a little bit of a dip, and Becca and I are going to talk about that for percent proficient more specifically, but our reading and writing has, is pretty level for the last three years. And again, we're, we are, if you look at the, the difference between the state and Oyster River, we're above the state percent proficient, we continue to be. So looking at the SATs, when they do the scoring for the SATs, they break it into areas, different areas. So for math, there's an algebra section, advanced math section, problem solving and data analysis section, and geometry and trigonometry section. So that, that's how they break that, those data pieces up. One of the things that we like to do is we like to look at each of those sections to get an idea of how our kids are doing in each of them and what the variation is, are there any trends with that? Is there something we need to look at with that? One of the things that we noticed when looking at it is that the advanced math section, there's a little, there's a little bit of an area that we want to dig more deeply into, we just haven't had an opportunity to do that. And some of that might be because the advanced math really is impacted by the number of kids that obviously are exposed to that and with our decline, after we came back from COVID, we had fewer kids taking algebra in the eighth grade, which would impact the number of kids that are reaching the advanced, advanced math earlier before they take the SATs. But we need to dig a little more deeply into that, and that's one of the, one of the goals for us, is to really have those conversations with, it would be, right now, I have time set aside with the department head at the high school and then with someone from the middle school to dig a little more deeply into that data over the summer. But that's one of the areas. For reading and writing, again, this is not the essay section, the essay section is separate, but for the reading and writing section, they're looking at information and ideas, craft and structure, expression of ideas and standard English conventions. And so these, in these areas, again, we don't see any one area sticking out, sort of saying you, this is, this is an area that we need to focus on. It's a, it's pretty much a bell curve as far as scores in all of these areas, which means we need to do a little more digging to be able to identify some trends, identify areas that we need to support our students with. The essay scores are a little different, so we only have two years of data for the essay scores. These, and you can see that we are right along lines with New Hampshire scores for our essay scores, except for this year, our mean essay writing score is a little bit higher. These scores, the range is between 2 and 8. So 8 would be sort of the, the highest point of that. So we have some questions, again, have some questions around this, around, you know, where might the areas of reading comprehension, quality of evaluation of source text, clarity and cohesiveness of students writing, and mastery of standard convention, English conventions, those are those areas. The, I put a link on, I don't know if you all had an opportunity to look at any of this, but if you're interested in seeing what an essay, what it actually entails, it's not just like the SAS where it's, it's, it's brief and you have to write a narrative about and it gives you a brief, it's very robust with what the kids have to read and analyze and, and assess and then construct. So that is a link to a practice essay question that would give you an idea of what that would look like for the kids taking, taking it. And this one, I believe, has more of a, this is more linked to, I think this is one, and I can't, I'm trying to remember which one I put in there, but I think this one is linked more to history and social studies content. And so that, but that'll give you a little bit of a picture. And you can even just go, if you, if you just Googled college board practice essay tests, SAT practice essay tests, you'd get some also. So this is an area that we, Becca and I have talked about digging a little bit more into, is the, the writing information. What, you know, how are our kids doing, following some kids that maybe have struggled, trying to identify, you know, are there certain classes that kids are taking? And also, we just want to ask ourselves, what does our scope and sequence of writing at the high school look like? What types of writing are we asking kids to do? And are we, are we missing anything here? So those are all future questions and conversations that we need to have. So, and this is just a reiteration of some of the things I've already talked about, but middle school, we're really working on bolstering the number of students that have access to the algebra program and being able to support kids that would like the challenge of algebra but may need some bolstering over the summer to get them ready. So we are offering a ramp up program over the summer for middle school students this year. Bill and Clay Calhoun have been working really hard to create this program and to outline it, and this will be messaged out to families. So if a student in the, is not recommended for eighth grade algebra, but they may, they have the potential to go in eighth grade algebra but just need some, some boosting, some ramping up in some skill areas, this would be offered to the student. Or if students feel like they're nervous about entering algebra in the eighth grade and they just need some additional support, they could, they could participate in this. And so this is something that we're working on right now. Again, we want to make sure that all students have the ability to access this course if they, if, if they're ready to access the course. And we want to get those numbers back up to pre-COVID numbers where they, where they were. We have a math specialist that is being at the middle school, similar to what was there prior to this year. We've always had somebody that was a certified math teacher that could special, that was a specialist, that could also support kids in those higher level math classes. So if we have students that want to enter geometry or at the high school and they need additional support, this person could help them with that. So we're really excited to be able to offer that again, as we did in the past. We are going to continue with our high school algebra program. Becca has been working with the counselors and with Kristen Perrin around who, who might benefit from that and making sure kids are aware with the math department, who might benefit from having additional support, algebra support. Our geometry is heavy algebra. And if kids struggle in geometry with those algebra skills, it may mean that they might struggle in algebra too. So we want to make sure that the kids are ready for this and that they have the supports that they need. And so this is something that the high school's been doing for years and is going to continue to do that. And math lab at the high school is going to be continuing to be, is going to be offered, and then we're also going to have, continue to offer flex interventions. And so what happens is during MTSS meetings at the high school, they talk about students that might benefit, and if there's a cohort of students that would benefit from getting additional geometry help or additional algebra help or pre-calculus or whatever that course is, then they create an intervention group even and to be able to support kids to get those skills that they need. And so they're going to continue to do that as well. For English, we need to really dive into our data a little bit more. We need to find out, you know, how are, how are kids doing with these content areas, these skill areas, and also to really look at our writing focused scope in the sequence and content and skills as well. And then ask ourselves, you know, are there trends with classes that kids are taking? Are there, do kids perform better on the SAT if they've taken a certain course or certain, or a certain area? Maybe they've taken APU as history, maybe that's helped them, you know? So we just want to dig a little bit more deeply into that, and that's going to take some, some time for us to do that and to look at course offerings. I'm just going to keep going. Should I keep going? Do you want me to answer questions now about the first part?
How about you pick?
It's up to you. Want me to just keep going? I'll keep going. Okay. Just write your questions down then. So we've started to follow classes. We did this with the elementary post-COVID, we follow, we've been following two cohorts of kids. And so what we want to do is start doing that at the high school level. It's a little bit more challenging at the high school level because of the, there isn't as much universal testing once they leave eighth grade. It's really the 10th grade PSATs and then the 11th grade SATs, and then maybe a smattering of AP testing here and there, but we don't, it's not universal. So what we, what I tried to do is I tried to follow this year's graduating class a little bit to give you an idea of percent proficient in these state tests and, and how kids are doing. So it gives you an idea of how there was a, you know, we, we had a sort of a COVID drop and then the kids started to, to come back up again with the number of kids that are percent proficient. So I, I, when I did this, I thought it was really interesting and I thought people might be interested in, in it as much as I am. So you can, you can see that the impact that COVID did have, but you can also see that the kids did regain some of what they lost, if not more. I'm going to move on to some of the personalization for kids. So this gives you an idea of the growth of the programs for the ELOs. There are different, I'm going to briefly talk about the difference between all of the different types of ELOs, and you're going to see, you know, the color bands, I tried to make them bright enough so that you could see the difference between the color bands. It really depends on the cohort of kids and what their interest level is. So it's just, it just, you can see that the numbers are really good. We had really great numbers of students who participated this year. And again, some years you have a higher number of independent coursework and other years you see internships increase. So again, it really depends on the student interest. The independent coursework would be an example of two, I'm going to give you two examples. It's a student who is interested in taking a class, but maybe it doesn't fit in their schedule. So there's one section, for example, one section of marine biology. It doesn't fit in their schedule, they're really interested in taking the course, so what they do is they talk to Ms. Kathy and they, and they work something out with her and with Mr. Peschel around how can I still engage in marine biology work if I can't do it in the actual class? Another example would be a student who might be interested in becoming a Realtor. So what they decide to do is to take a real estate course that is not offered within the school, but it's still a course, it's independent coursework that they're doing on their own, but it is a course, it's just not, it's just not offered at Oyster River, but they go online and they take a, a real, real estate course. So those would be an example of independent coursework. Advanced studies might be, a lot of times you'll see advanced studies are when kids are interested in a course and they have, and pottery is a great example of this, or ceramics. Ceramics might have ceramics one and ceramics two. Well, a student might have a really, be intensely interested in continuing their studies in ceramics, but there's no ceramics three. So what they do is they advance their studies and they work with one of the art teachers and with Mr. Peschel to be able to create that next level of course. Peer instructors is pretty self-explanatory, they are instructors within a classroom, it's usually a student that has taken multiple years of something. Sometimes we see this with world language, where you, where you'll have a student who has taken multiple years of a world language and they're highly proficient and they speak with their world language teacher and they work it out so that they can be a peer instructor within the classroom, and they work with, they learn from the teacher about how do I create lesson plans and how do I support kids and how do, you know, how do you, how do you create opportunities for kids to continue to learn the subject area? And so that's really what a peer instructor is. And then the last thing is an internship, again, pretty, pretty explanatory, it's either, typically, it's typically unpaid, sometimes there are paid internships, but it's usually unpaid, and they're connected with someone in the professional field or outside of the school walls and they engage in those studies. So those are the different types of ELOs, and we see some fluctu, again, fluctuation, but a lot of kids that are over 70 kids this year, which is just amazing. Again, we talked about this at the last meeting, the number of kids that are involved with Career Technical. I broke it up by school, so Dover is in green, Rochester's in red, and Somersworth is blue, and you can get an idea of, of the type of program of where kids are attending. But these numbers have been increasing over time and probably will continue to, to grow. And, and just to give you an idea of the starting And, and just to give you an idea of the starting point, in 2017, 2018, we had 28 kids involved with CTE. And now we're, we are well over 100. So we're really excited about the growth of those programs. Advanced placement is another area that we like to look at. These, these numbers here are from the college board. So I just want to say that these numbers of students are the kids that took the core, took a course and then took the exam. So whether they took it at Oyster River, or they took an AP course on V-Lax, or some other place, or they prepped, they took computer science, but then they did additional work on computer science, and then took a computer science AP, that's, that's all included in here. It doesn't, there are kids that prep outside of Oyster River and take an AP exam, but they're still Oyster River students. So I just want to preface that. We have 12 courses at the high school that are AP courses. We have four math, four science, one social studies, two world language, and one business course. So those are the numbers of AP courses that we have. You can see that the number of students that are enrolled in our AP courses has, it's increased, and that's because there's actually more AP courses, like AP economics, I think started maybe like four years ago? No, wasn't there when I was, so that, so that's relatively new. Mr. LaCass, pre-calc is new. That's right. So there's some additional courses that have been, that have been added over the, over the recent history. But that gives you an idea. We have more kids taking these classes and, and more kids taking the exam. Not all students who are enrolled in an AP class are necessarily taking the exam. However, I would say almost all of them are. Okay. So 17 students that enrolled in our AP classes did not take the exam, which is, which is a relatively small number. Yeah, Matt?
In the this year column, the 158 total AP students and the 305 exams, does that indicate that a lot of these kids are taking multiple exams?
Yes. A lot of the kids that are taking AP classes are taking multiple AP classes, whether it's within the, within the building, or whether it's both in the building and prepping outside of the building. You're going to see similar, similarly, if you look at, and we don't have the scores right for this year, that's why it says NA. July will, will get our AP scores. Gianna?
Yeah, Matt brought something up that actually, to me, is actually a rather odd thing about the way this is reported, is this is percent of total AP students with scores three plus. Well, we just know that there's lots of AP students who are taking more than one. So you're not actually getting the percentage of how many, of how many tests there were, and how many tests actually were passed to three and above, because you're actually just getting how many students pass them, the percentage of them. When in fact, one, if one kid took four AP exams, they're going to hit as a positive the percentage that they passed with the three plus, even if they didn't pass it with the three plus with the other ones. So I'm assuming it's the college board that's reporting it this way, but do you see what I'm saying? It's actually not
Yes.
really getting an idea of like, if you take the test, how many of the tests are actually three, four, or five, regardless of how many students there are.
Yep.
So I don't know if that's something that's pullable from the site, because it's actually, that would be the more informative statistic.
No, I was just going to add that we do look at each year exams by subject area, the full array of performance and the mean score within that exam. This is just college, pointing out in the college board summary. I mean, I, I think because in some cases, there's a small census of students in a particular exam, as, as we know, it may distort, in, in some ways, give a predictive representation of the course itself over time. In other words, we, we do look at it always. This is directly a summary. And the purpose here is to show trends in, in terms of three things that are important. One, there seems some fluctuation in terms of what is considered a passing score over time. The two positive trends that we wanted to highlight is that there is a consistent increase in numbers of students who are sitting for exams, you know, the, the courses, and the number of total exams that are now being, students that are sitting for those exams as well. So that, that's really it. I think the detail work that you mentioned is really looking year to year at trends around how a particular cohort of students are performing within a subject area that will inform how we meet with teachers and have discussions about adjusting instruction around those exams. I think what happens in the summary each year also, they identify the number of AP scholars, and that is an indication of how many students are taking multiple exams and scoring three above, four above, or five as well. So those are all different statistics or information around the AP program. But I think for the purpose of the presentation tonight, we just wanted to highlight the overall trends and not specifically looking at individual subjects and courses. But I think you're accurate there.
Most of these kids are juniors and seniors that are taking the AP classes. Heather?
So has this changed since, you know, I take AP exams back in the dark ages? I seem to remember that threes weren't really very useful. They didn't really get you a lot of credit. So it's interesting that they report three and above, when really fours and fives are what get you any sort of credit at colleges, depending on where you go.
Yes. And it does depend on where you go also, because one of the things that I learned very quickly on my college tours recently is that a lot of schools, even if you take the AP and you do, you could get a five, the colleges want you to retake it. So I, it's important, it's important for kids and families to, it's, I think that it, it definitely is important for kids to take these classes, and especially if you're in, if you're interested in pursuing a specific field, to continue your studies with AP classes within that field. But I don't want kids to, just like running, just like early college classes, there's no guarantee that whatever school you go to, they're going to take, take that and, and waive that class. And so it's really important for families to do their homework around that.
If I can just add to, just to your point, I mean, not only that, I think there's been a, I think AP has been consistent in suggesting that a three is proficiency in their mind. Colleges individually have a different opinion of that, and there's been a lot of public conversation about that, what that means. And they've moved away from even acknowledging threes or fours. And Suzanne said, for most students who are going to universities and colleges where they're majoring in a certain area in that subject area, they will give you credit for an elective of graduation, but not necessarily provide you with that, advancing you for that. But I, I think one thing that I just want to highlight and talk about, and we can continue this conversation, is that the, this is an exam-based course, and it is, is consistent across when students are enrolling in a particular AP subject, they are really being benchmarked against all students across the globe. And one of the things that AP does provide is they, they give a composite, how did our students do against all students taking this course in New Hampshire? And in my case, previously, New York. And then how did the students do against all students who are taking this course across the globe? And that, that does give us a representative in terms of mean score and how our students are doing over time relative to all other students who are taking it. And I think that's important for us as we look at our commitment to this, you know, AP, to the AP program and being an AP school, because we do want to look at number of students over time, because it tells us where do we have to make adjustments in our courses or as a system that supports students taking these courses. What does that mean in terms of preparation along? Because I would say that for every student taking a BC Calculus course, as I mentioned before, you want to thank a fourth grade math teacher, because the connection between how that is cumulative in terms of preparation.
Really quick, one of the things colleges do look at, so when I think of how much work seniors put in in the fall in applying, they do look for the types of courses that students are taking. So are, are students taking the hardest courses that school offers? That's something they will take into consideration, especially depending on what kind of school you're applying to.
And they, as part of our profile, it'll say how many AP classes our kids have access to. Denise?
Interesting. I just think it's interesting that more students are taking AP classes. So presumably, you know, they're proficient enough to take these AP classes, but yet the SAT scores have gone down, you know? So there's sort of a little bit of a disconnect there, because you would expect if you have more students that are proficient enough to take advanced placement, that, and I understand they're not taking the advanced placement classes till most likely their senior year, they're taking the SATs as a junior, but still, I just feel like there's a disconnect there. And I, I just wonder if, if, you know, part, and of course, we're, we're seeing that trend, not just obviously at the school, but at the state level and nationally, how the scores have kind of gone down, and now they're coming back up after COVID. But I just, I just feel like there's a little bit of disconnect there with that.
And that, part of that is really, we need to look at individual students too and see progress, right? So like, how do they do, if we pull out kids that are in, you know, that are taking AP tests and say, okay, well, what did they take? What courses did they take? How did they do in the SATs and the PSATs? Are there any predictors? Are there any? So that's work that we have to do on our end.
And I would just add, when you start, say, AP math, you're starting at AP pre-calc, right? And moving up from there. So if you have a student who is starting at a lower level than algebra, they're not getting to what we would consider those advanced math classes, which then they're tested on their junior year on the SATs. So really, when we look at COVID, what happened after COVID with our math classes, we had a huge increase in like integrated algebra and pre-algebra, like what kids were coming into in the high schools, they weren't reaching those higher math levels. So I think what we're, the ramps that Dr. Schatz and Suzanne are adding in at the eighth grade level is to get more kids to be able to take algebra in eighth grade, to get into those higher math classes, if that's the track they want to be on, which would also mean they, they might be taking more AP classes. So a kiddo who didn't get there, their senior year might take quantitative reasoning, right? It's not an AP class, but it is an early college class, for example. But it's going to be different math, a different track that they've taken then to get there. So they wouldn't have all of the same as maybe an AP student when they're taking the SATs as a junior. So there, I think there are different things we can look at too. It's, it's not just that, it's the AP kids testing. If they're taking AP math classes at that time, are going to do really well in math. And I think we're looking at the other cohorts too, and the tracks that they're on, and how can we help those kiddos?
Yeah. And I think just to, like I said, that this introduction of the eighth grade ramp up program, I think the philosophy is to say, how do we provide multiple ramps for kids within the high schools well, that provides for opportunities to accelerate or at least challenge themselves relative to advanced courses? So this is the first effort to do that through algebra, because that is important for us, the system. The second opportunity would be thinking what, at the high school around that bridge program, that would provide additional ramps, because we, we want all kids to have the opportunity, based on when, where they're at, to be able to kind of accelerate at, at a level that is, is right for them.
Heather?
So as we offer our 12 AP courses, do we have a procedure or something to assess how well the tours, the courses are being taught? So say if a AP balloon twisting class was being offered, and the students testing it were routinely getting twos in the exam, do we have a mechanism to assess whether that is an effective offering if we know that historically, the students aren't being successful when they take the exam? And how do we deal with that?
I think one of the things we're looking at this summer, because we can get the past five years of AP scores, is just looking at what are the trends in the different classes?
And then I think, I would say, where the professional development support, there are opportunities in the summer for teachers to receive professional development and utilize the strength in that. I, I think that's where you have to distinguish between if we have, you know, a small numbers of students with a course over time, how do you recognize that? Also, the other factor is when students are taking that, you know, there are patterns where seniors who are in an AP course say, I'm going to sit for the exam, I haven't committed to this course, it's my senior year, I'm into college. You know, what, how are those outliers relative to performance factor into performance over time? And I think that is something, from my prior experience, we really looked at, because of, we had a philosophy of encouraging as many kids to take those courses. So in some cases, challenging kids to take a college-level course, knowing that their scores, one is two, would be representative of really a commitment to do some rigorous work. That's different from saying, how is the course organized and the instructor committed to meeting that level of rigor in their own delivery of instruction? So I think you have to look at multiple layers to this. It's, it's an important question, and that's why disaggregating the performance of all students over time and looking at the syllabus and looking at the pace of instruction, someone is all comprehensive to answer your question.
So college course enrollment is another area that we are looking at. These two, the two pieces of information here are a little bit different, and a part of that is because it's the way we get the data and what we can, so. So for our CATS courses, these are courses that students are going to UNH and taking classes. These, the students have, there are certain criteria that the students have to meet in order to be able to take a CATS class. And if you take a CATS class, you can only get the, you have to pick. I'm either going to get college credit for it, it's going to be a college class, or I'm going to take it, and the high school's going to give me credit. Most of the kids are taking the college route. So most of the, most of the kids here that you're, that the numbers that you're seeing here, these kids are taking classes at UNH, they're UNH courses, and they're getting a UNH transcript. But that is not necessarily, they're not getting a credit at Oyster River, which means the counselors have to do a lot of planning with students to make sure that they're meeting their graduation requirements, as well as taking these CATS classes and making sure that they qualify and they have access to these courses. So we see, when I was counting the number of students, so that you have the total enrollments, and then the number of students that are enrolled in these courses, you obviously can see that the number of students is not equi, not the same as the enrollments, and that's because our students that typically, they typically take more than one CATS class. So there are some kids, there was one student, when I was looking at it, and this particular student was taking, I think they took four, four classes to a semester. So, so there, it depends on, again, it depends on the student, if they, if they qualify for the CATS class, if there's, if there are seats available at UNH for the students to take the class, because there has to be seats available for them. And then it also is a matter of whether or not the students have earned enough credits at Oyster River High School to be able to graduate, to be able to access those classes. So there's a lot of variables that go into the CATS classes. The dual enrollment or early college courses are a little bit different, because the kids are getting college credit, and they're also getting high school credit. So, so you're going to see, it's going to look a little, a little bit different. We had, there are 20, this year, we had 38 courses that were, and 325 student enrollments. Again, this is, there are duplicates. There are a lot of kids that are taking multiple classes that are dual enrollment, and the state continues to provide funds for students to be able to take these courses without having a cost for the families. So this is something that, that you tend to see a lot of students participate in. There's a few courses that are both, and I'm, and I'm just, I don't know exactly what they are, but they're both AP and, yeah, pre-calc and economics, maybe, and AP economics. There's a few that have both. You're, there are an AP course as well as a dual enrollment course. And then we, most of the courses are through the community college system. There's a couple courses that are through SNHU, but most of them are, I think there's only one maybe through
Anatomy and Physiology.
Okay, anatomy and physiology is through SNHU, but the rest are through the community college system. And again, it's the same thing with APs. Some schools will accept these classes, and they'll, and you'll get, it'll go onto your transcript as, it could be electives, it could be towards a major, it depends on the school, and it depends on the class. It's similar to if you're a transfer student. Sometimes you get the credits a certain way, and other times you have to retake the class. It's a very, very similar thing. So post-secondary, oh, Heather?
On the CATS classes, students get one paid, and then after that, they have to pay some amount?
Yeah. They, there was recent changes to this, and I'd have to, I don't want to misspeak, so we'd have to go back and look.
But is that how it used to be? Did I remember that?
Yeah. I can't remember. They did change it though, and I just don't remember how they changed it.
I think they do have to pay the first one at a lower rate. It's a lower rate for both, but even lower the first semester, but I would have to double check.
Post-secondary choices, we don't have these numbers for this year's class yet, because we, the kids are
They just held out the survey.
Yeah. So they just did the survey. So we'll, we'll have these numbers later. But this gives you an idea for the numbers of kids choosing four-year college, one to three, work, military, and gap years. And then just to talk a little bit about post-secondary choices, that students are, these, so this is a smattering, it's, it's a lot, I know. It's not, it's not complete, but the, the plan, these are some of the universities and colleges that kids have made plans to attend. So some of these will look familiar, and, you know, some of them are So some of these will look familiar, and, you know, some of them are unique. So just to wrap up a little bit, we, again, we want to examine some of the English data, look at our writing program and the course offerings within the ELA. For math, we want to continue to look at our progression. We did a lot of work this year on our progression of courses, our progression of skills and knowledge. The, the math teachers really, they like data, so they're always going into it and looking at it and figuring out where some, you know, how they need to shift and adjust, adjust courses accordingly. So this work will continue. We're really excited to be offering some of these ramp-up programs for students. And then we want to continue to monitor the growth of some of the programs that we have that personalize education for kids. So what do our ELOs look like in our CTE classes and, and all of those other opportunities? Becca and I have talked a lot about getting alumni input. So we're looking next year to have some focus groups of alumni. Probably, we're looking at pulling in kids that are either seniors in college or recent college grads or juniors in college, to be able to pull those groups in and have conversations with them around, you know, did you feel prepared for college? And, and those types of questions. So we want to try to pull some focus groups in. And then, in the 26, 27 school year, we want, we would like to do an alumni survey. That's something that, that the last time we did that for Oyster River was pre-COVID, so it's been many, many years. And it, and Becca has expressed a lot of interest in doing that. I don't want to speak for you. Okay. We've had many conversations about this. And, and then NIASK. The NIASK process really offers an opportunity for self-reflection and for diving into instruction and assessment practices and teaching practices. So we're, so that process, which the high school's going through right now, will also add some insights to the work. I don't know if there's any questions that we can answer for you? Additional questions? Denise?
I know, you know, I hear, you know, saying you're going to do a deep dive to try and tease out some of these things, but I'm just curious. I mean, obviously, COVID accounts probably for a lot of the drop, but do you feel like there are maybe other factors besides COVID that might be, that might account? You know, and I know that they're sort of starting, I mean, actually, math is sort of, yeah, hasn't really gone up a whole lot from what it was, but I'm just curious if you think there may be other factors other than COVID.
Technology. I do think with the amount that kids are on cell phones, that does affect them. And there is plenty of research, we've talked about that a little bit already, but I do think that is a factor. The other thing that we have seen since COVID really is like, I think it's called photo-math. So just even technology of what they can have, that they take a picture of something, and it actually shows them how to solve it and do it. And so that happened a lot during COVID in many different schools. And so you have kids who passed classes during COVID, but then they didn't actually get the skills to be moving on during COVID. So there's some of that still, things like that are how they use technology. But I do think COVID not being in schools, you know, remote learning, like what, what learning did they not get during that time did set them back, and then coming back in. Like I said, we did have more of the lower-level math classes, like actual more courses that we had to offer, and because kids needed that, right? And so I think what we're doing now is looking at the different things that we can add to help kids get to where that they should be.
Heather?
So we didn't ask any of the questions during the SAT section, so now we get them now. I think, following on what Denise was saying with the recovery after COVID, it's, it's happening, but it's slow. The group out of Harvard that does like the COVID recovery tracking, and it's sort of a blunt assessment, but one of the things they noted was that for both reading and math, that recovery in female students is happening at a much slower rate than for their male peers, and you can also break that down by demographic, although it's harder because of the smaller demographics of the district. So I would encourage, as we're doing those deep dives, to sort of parse that out, too. There, some analysis is showing that, so I think it's something we should look at as well. And then, the only other comment I'll make is I really, well, I have two more, I lied. I very much appreciate the comparisons with Oyster River, Nashville, and New Hampshire, but I really think we're missing a piece here. We should have a peer group.
Yep.
That we have identified, and I would really very much like to see these numbers against our peer groups, because overall, New Hampshire isn't cutting it. I want, you know, if we want to believe we're one of the top districts in the, in the state, we should make sure of that, we should, we should show that.
So we did, we did do that. We did dive a little more deeply to some of the comparables, looking at the class of 2025 specifically. And we can, we did a comparison with Hanover, Portsmouth, Exeter, Bedford, and Dover. So Bedford and Portsmouth were equivalent on percent proficiencies in both of those, both of those areas. Exeter, we're the same in ELA, we're a little bit above in math. Hanover, we are not at the same percentage. We're, we're a little bit below for both math and ELA. And then for Dover, we're a little bit above for both. So we are looking at that, we are doing some comparables, and it depends on, you know, we see some, some differences there with the comparables.
All right, my second one is that I very much appreciate this high school-specific presentation. I've been thinking back, this is the presentation we usually give when we meet with Barrington, or some variation on the theme, but we don't get it as a board ourselves, except in snippets throughout the year. So I very much appreciate the new format, where we're taking a deeper dive into just the high school, and I look forward to seeing the next one, too.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. Do you have anything else, Suzanne? It's okay, yeah, you can wait.
So June 20th is a teacher workshop day. We're, we're very excited about the day. The morning will be building level work. The principals are working on that right now, getting that all, all set up and ironed out. We have building registrars and front office staff. We're doing some training and some work with that group. And special education will also be doing some training, and that's in the morning. We're going to do a district-wide lunch, which I'm really excited for. It's a little bit of a surprise, so I'm not going to talk very much about it. And then the afternoon, we are going to be doing vertical transition meetings. So it's a great opportunity to have some transition work occurring and conversations occurring between grade levels, between buildings. So we're very excited about that. Dr. Schatz will be having his World Cafe for strategic planning with, with different groups who have not, who have not been able to participate at this point, such as the paraeducators, school nutrition staff, transportation, IT and facilities. And special education will continue with their training in the afternoon as well. So we're really excited to have this opportunity on the 20th to do this work. And that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Move to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I know we have a full agenda tonight, just a couple of updates. One, I want to echo all that has been said about recent performances. I, the senior art show was just superlative. It was wonderful to see the variety of talents of our students, our seniors. This is my first band of, band of Palooza experience, and it was an interesting, certainly rewarding event, and great musical talents. And then yesterday, the choral concert was wonderful, just to see the various ages of students vertically, but also in combined participation, the talents of students. The hiring process continues tonight. You have, through the consent agenda, some, you know, some candidates, but also we're, you know, finishing up the process. Over the next meeting or so, we will be able to present additional candidates. I want to touch on the continuing legislative process. We had an alert earlier this afternoon about a bill that was attached to a cybersecurity bill that really is focused on moving forward with a plan for open enrollment statewide that is problematic. And I think Gianna has been diligent and really been representing both individually as a board member, but also collectively as the school board. And I think as they're in the home stretch around the legislative process and the budget bill, and certainly things that have been already signed into law, there are direct implications for the school system and our community. I think this one that is attached around open enrollment, I just earlier had the opportunity to send it to Gianna, I'll distribute it to the entire board, but it's significant if it moves forward. And we, we need to, I think, start to anticipate things that might come to fruition relative to impact immediately on the school district, or delayed impact in terms of policies and processes, and the ability to kind of deal with local control relative to our values as a public school system and our community. And so I think it's important to get that message out, because it's not too late, but the clock is ticking. So I just wanted to make that statement, how important it is for us to pay attention, including the administration, because as we're trying to wrap up the year, we're in the home stretch, we are sidetracked in terms of our full attention. So I appreciate our statewide organization, the School Boards Association as well, to stay focused, because they need to be attentive to what's happening in real time as we go forward. And that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll move to the business administrator's report.
So I just have one item to report out on. The, the school board had requested an update on the fields that have been received from the updated facilities fee schedule that it went to effect on July 1st. And they wanted to know what portion of these fields will be going to the revolving fund created by the community. Just a reminder to the, everybody and the public and the board, this revolving fund was approved by the voters in March of 2024 to set aside rental fees received from the rental of the district's athletic fields. These fees can be used for maintaining or replacement of the athletic fields in the future. In your packet, in each month, you receive a monthly financial statement from me. If you pull up that report, this is where you will see where we've recollected the fees to date. So I'll just give you a second if anybody has that put away. This information is also updated monthly and posted on our website, so if anybody in the public would also like to see this, it's listed under the business off this section, if you'd like to go back and see any historical data on these fees or our finances. At the top of the form, you will see a detailed listing of the district's revenues. About the eighth line down, under the account description, you will see rental of school facilities. In the past, the district has estimated approximately $30,000 for rentals in all of our buildings. If you look all the way across, year-to-date, we have received $69,798 for the rental of facilities. This does not include the field rentals. The additional $39,798 in revenue will be used to offset taxes in the fall. Because we didn't estimate that when we set the tax rate, this is considered unanticipated revenue, can't be spent, it needs to be used to offset taxes. I would like to clarify, because this is an anomaly, 30,000 of that additional revenue came from a single rental this spring. I'm hoping they come back, they've told us they will come back. They used our high school for a very large dance festival. So I don't anticipate that it will happen every year, but they did give me an indication that they would be back. So next year, the number might be a little bit less, but I just wanted you to know that it wasn't an increase to the fees that the whole community paid, it was just a single rental. On the backside of the sheet, if you look to the very bottom section, this is where we track the revenue collected just from the athletic fields to date. As of May 21st, we are showing that we have collected $12,375 that will be allocated to the athletic field revolving fund. In the future, this area of the financial statement will show expenses and encumbrances for allowable expenses for the fields that have been only approved by the school board. So the business office won't be making any expenses, charges to that unless the school board has approved it. Overall, the district has received $52,173 of additional rental fee, $39,798 that will go to offset taxes, and the $12,375 will be for future expenses for the maintenance or replacement of the district's athletic fields. Does anybody have any questions?
Heather?
Sorry, I wasn't paying attention properly. The $12,375 is where?
It's at the bottom, on the backside of the sheet.
Are you willing to entertain non-field-related questions?
Sure.
The estimated net revenue expenses line from the last report we have dated end of March was like 1.2 million under, and we're now sitting at 558. I didn't go through and look at them side by side, but what were the big-ticket changes? Is that's bad math, roughly 700?
We've had some items in some of the buildings that have failed that we've had to, and there've been pretty significant big-ticket items that we've had to fix. Another item that is higher than usual is the need to rent buses for athletics. While we have our own buses, unfortunately, we can't, with the way our routes are and the way the scheduling is for athletic events, we haven't been, always been able to do that. That's another significant area of, of expense for us. And also, we've really been working hard with the schools and the administration and their admin assistants to make sure that we get purchase orders put in for what they were going to need to get them to the end of the year. So if it was either a field trip, or a graduation expense, or anything like that, we really pushed them just before April break to put in all of their purchase orders for what they thought they were going to need to get to the end of the year. So that was a big, not expensive one item, but a big push for them to put in those encumbrances.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Move on to, there's no student, the finance committee?
We are meeting tomorrow for, what do we decide to call it?
Budget 101.
Budget 101, or boot camp, depends on how I'm feeling at the time.
Yeah, budget camp. Everything you need to know about budgeting in Oyster River.
It sounds scintillating, so good luck. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the unanimous consent agenda. I have one change to the list of positions for hiring. Candidate Lilly, last name L-I-L-L-Y, has withdrawn their application, and they will, so they will not be a part of this affirmation of hiring. Does anyone else have any, anything they'd like to pull from unanimous consent? Okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve the unanimous consent agenda, which includes the affirmation for the hiring list of positions for the 25, 26 school year, and policies for second read, adoption, and deletion, which include policy DK, payments, checks, and manifests, EBCA, crisis prevention and emergency response, EBCD, emergency closings for adoption, and DK, payment manifest, and EBCA for deletion. Can I have a second? Renee, thank you. All in favor? Six in favor, thank you very much. We'll move on to our discussion and action items. Is this one, is this one a quick one or a short one? I mean, a quick, if this is going to take a little bit, I'd like to ask for a two-minute break. Is that okay? Are you okay with it? All right, thank you. We'll be back in two minutes. We'll be back in two minutes. We'll be back in two minutes. Okay, thank you very much.
Throughout the day and hopefully getting into homes. Unfortunately, there wasn't enough parents that were interested this year in participating in the parent training, but we will continue to offer that. The year prior, we had several parents, so I'm not sure why the numbers were lower. But again, I just want to extend that it's not just infused throughout the building, but our hope is to infuse it throughout the community. Would you like to add anything?
Under the educational equity goal for all of our buildings, ours was really focused on the MTSS work that the two elementary schools have been doing for a number of years. And we, our outcomes showed that we've almost hit every initiative and really completed them. And the impact on students through the, these outcomes and achieving these initiatives is really consistency from the schools and all of our staff in understanding how to identify students, how to identify their need, how to keep track of the services that we're providing, and then how to exit students when we know that they've met the goals that we have. You can see, we had three initiatives, documenting and revising the pathway for students. We've been able to do that. Again, MTSS is something that we've worked on for years in both buildings, and it was really this year focusing on making sure that what was happening in both buildings was in the same neighborhood and very consistent. We've created binders and different outlines that detail exactly what you do. If you're a classroom teacher and you have a concern, here's the path that we go on. And we were really documenting the paths that we have created over the past number of years. That includes the second initiative, entry and exit criteria. No longer, you know, 20 years ago, you received service if somebody thought maybe you were, we were concerned about you, and it was much more of a gut feeling. We're really using data, and we have very consistent entry and exit criteria to understand why a student would qualify in such a way to get pulled out of class to do additional work. Of course, students who, we don't often talk about this, I guess, when we talk about MTSS, but there is a group of students who don't qualify for MTSS and still need help, and they receive that help clearly. But that help is targeted in the classroom through the classroom teacher with support from reading specialists or math specialists. We're talking here about the process for students who need to be pulled out for additional work. And then the last initiative, that outcome is still in development around how we process and proceed through communication. Both buildings communicate the MTSS process to families through progress reports and other ways, and we're just working on making sure that those forms of communication are consistent in both buildings. They're not necessarily identical, but that families are getting similar information at similar times. So that's an initiative that, that's an outcome that is still in progress that we'll continue with as we move forward.
David, I have a question. For the, the second bullet, the entry and exit criteria, you mentioned that's more of a data-driven process now, so my question is twofold. What kind of data do you look at? And second, is there still space for teacher recommendation? That gut check you were talking about, is there still space for that?
There is space for that because every student is unique. And so every time we sit down and look at student data, we use data in a very broad sense. We're talking about classroom performance, we're talking about specific quantitative data like STAR assessments in grades two through four, Akadience assessments in kindergarten and first grade. We're looking at, in math, say, end of mod assessments through Eureka. We're looking at different ways that teachers have assessed students in reading comprehension, or if they've done QuickPhonic screeners or other tools to get more data. And then it's really important to look at the whole child. So there could be non-sort of data-driven reasons why a student is showing certain outcomes right now, and as a team, we'd make decisions on whether it makes sense to enter into that system or not. But those are the primary data points. We always like to have at least three, so there would be classroom work, there would be STAR, there could be Akadience. There are times when we have questions, so then we might choose to do some additional assessments to add more data to the conversation and then come back to it.
Okay, this, I love this slide, I love this work. I personally have grown professionally this year under these areas. So administrative and teacher staff. There was a group of us that participated in a course from Stanford University, a Joe Bowler course, and for me, it was the first time experiencing that professional development. It created an opportunity to talk about our instructional practices. We talked a lot about the NCTM best practices. These are conversations that are ongoing, but we've had an opportunity, again, at Mas Way, we've talked about this with our, our math specialist. She has led a lot of those conversations. She also participated in the course through our MTSS team time. She and I together actually spent time in classrooms. It was part of our coaching model to observe teachers, talk about what we saw, what I might observe or interpret as a quality instructional practice in math. As a principal, might be different to her because she's, you know, a math specialist. So this course allowed us a lot of opportunity to grow, have great conversations. I'm eager for those conversations to continue. This work is not done, and I hope that our, our, our staff globally continue to talk about this, not just the people that participated in the course. As for ELA, this again is a multi-year initiative. We did a lot of work this year under Suzanne's leadership to create an ELA committee to look at the, we created a criteria, we looked at a variety of programs that are out there. Again, this is to meet the law. We have broken this down to two comprehensive ELA programs that we will be piloting next year, K through five, and we look forward to that experience and then determining which program we went, we would like to go through or to choose long-term to implement. There's a lot of, I guess I'll quote Heather, big feelings around the pilot next year and the, the things that might come for the ELA choice that we determine. I personally feel very positive about it. I think change can sometimes be hard, but a lot of wonderful things is going to come out of that, so I look forward to continuing that work as well.
Under engaging families in the community, our initiative was to really just make sure that we had consistent and predictable communication. We had done a lot of work over the past few years as a district, as many of you know on the board, around communication with consultants and with plans. And so it was really just making sure that what our offices were doing was consistent and predictable, and what our classroom teachers are doing is consistent and predictable. So our, both buildings send weekly information to communities. Classroom teachers are continuing the practice of stating how they communicate and then following that plan throughout the year. The vast majority of teachers communicate every other week or more, and everyone this year transitioned to using ParentSquare as the medium for sending those mass communications. And, and then there we go. And we continue to figure out what to communicate really is always an interesting learning goal for me as a, as an administrator. I'll speak for myself around, you know, specific information versus theoretical things that are happening in education versus issues going on in the community or things I'm just thinking about around learning. There, there are so many different types of communication, and so really working through that is, for me, a constant goal is, as an administrator. But we are definitely hitting our consistency and predictability. And our last, under our last category of a professional culture, this one is really exciting, I think. Creating consistent opportunities for teachers to learn, collaborate, model, and share instructional best practices and educational research. This is an initiative that I don't think should ever end, nor should it ever even be considered to be complete. But we've had some really positive outcomes this year around, around this. We've talked at these meetings about peer-to-peer observations, both teacher-to-teacher and in a coaching model as well between math and reading specialists with teachers that's happening in both buildings. We've had PD brought into our faculty meetings. We've had our own faculty sharing their PD learnings at faculty meetings. We also have a sabbatical happening in the district, which is an elementary school sabbatical this year focused on integration. And that teacher, Sarah Curtin, is working with members of both buildings in her PLC around that work. So those are just many, many examples of really positive outcomes. And then we've also shared with you from both buildings at other times, some of the integrated projects that have been happening between digital learning specialists and library media specialists, and math and reading specialists, and classroom teachers, and that type of experience is then shared with the rest of the faculty for more shared learning on how to create units that are engaging and integrated in that way. So that's a, to me, that's a really exciting one. That is the foundation of, of good learning for us, and therefore, the outcome is engaging and really positive learning experiences for our students. Those were our goals, our initiatives for this year and the outcomes that we've been able to hit in our buildings with all of our work with our faculty. Questions, comments, thoughts? Ms. Day?
I will just say, as far as the communication, is that I have definitely appreciated getting the weekly updates and that consistent, you know, and that's actually true also to, for middle and high. It's just been really nice. As a board member who doesn't have a student in the school, I felt like at times I kind of struggled to find out exactly what was going on, and I feel like this year, like I've known all, you know, exactly what's been going on. It's been really nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, both of you, for your hard work this year.
Catherine?
I think Alexander's going to change it.
Okay. Look at those slides. Those are, I like those arrows.
You like those arrows?
Yeah, I cheated. I took, I took Misty and David's template. I was hoping I would go first so I could show you my fabulous template, and then you would see that they stole the template, but it didn't work out in my favor.
Pride and ownership.
Catherine Plora, Director of Student Services, providing you with an update on the goals and student services this year. So we had, our first initiative was based on promoting the children's social emotional learning and development, so similar to the goal at elementary school, looking at how we're going to meet the individualized educational needs, including therapeutic supports in least restrictive environment. And when we entered this goal, it was a big idea. And the big idea has turned into different ideas due to the fact that we do not have space to look at growing a program that would be in a different setting. So as we know, we don't have other locations or other buildings. I have this grand plan of taking over the SAU building someday and making that a location that is a therapeutic program setting for students, but that would mean we would need to relocate the SAU office and there's no space anywhere. So what we have done within that is we have looked at other ways that we can meet the therapeutic needs, and I would still like to continue to explore the big idea of what it would look like to have a therapeutic setting within our district that would be open to all students. So identifying the essential components of a program for middle school, high school. So at the high school level, we've compiled components based on behavioral health needs and graduation requirements. So we've been looking at how we can meet the needs of students while also making sure they meet the graduation requirements. And we've started, as you know, we implemented a behavioral health position between the middle school and high school, and in addition to that, we've been looking at alternative programming, and we're going to be creating some alternative programming or expanding the alternative programming through the pathways program at the high school next year. We'll be able to offer a setting within the high school that will allow students to have their academic and social emotional needs met in a different way. At the middle school, we developed a middle school program that includes academics and social emotional supports with certified staff and support staff. So we hired a special education teacher with some expertise around working with children who have some challenges around the social emotional part of their day. And so he has been collaborating with our school counseling staff and our school behavioral health, mental health counselor in looking at who enhance that program. We also, as you know, hired our district BCBA last year, our first in district BCBA, and she has also been helping to collaborate and grow that program. So at this point, most of the students in the program have been identified as needing the program because they have it as a service to support as part of their IEP, but we've expanded it and have allowed that space to also be a space for other students. And so we are going to continue to grow that and set some criteria around that. Researching evidence-based programming, we're certainly looking at programming and practices that are best aligned to meet the needs of students, and we're always focusing on that least restrictive environment. So how can we provide that evidence-based programming within the environment where they're with their peers as much as possible? What we know is generally, isolated, separate programs for students do not work well in helping them grow socially because they thrive in being with their typical peers, their friends, and so we have to balance that all the time. Like, what is an environment going to look like, and how are we also going to provide opportunities for them to be learning skills and practicing skills? And when you're practicing skills, you've got to do that in a real-world environment. You've got to have that natural environment. You have to be able to, you know, work within a group, within a classroom setting. It can't be all contrived. It all can't be set up with the best situation because we're trying to help students grow and develop these skills. So when they move on, they have more independent skills to apply into their next setting. And whether that, you know, after high school is a work setting, a college setting, a training program, military, what have you, we want to develop the skill sets that help them to reach those goals. Visiting potential programs, we did visit a program this year at Hanover High School that we are modeling a bit at the high school next year. So we found a lot of success in the, Hanover has found a lot of success in the program they've created, and we spent some time with them and their staff and made a partnership with them through our counseling department. So we plan to continue to investigate other potential programs that we could look at just to see, what are you doing and what's working, and what are some cool ideas that you found? The other thing that we've made a connection with just recently is CECOS Youth Services. So they're an organization that provides services, they can provide services to school districts, and we have used them off and on at times, but they're expanding their offerings and they're bringing their supports and programs down to the elementary age level next year. So they're a service that can provide some short-term programming for students. It can be longer if needed. In the past, it was more of a model where students might seek support for substance abuse or other related disorders, but now it really is about looking at, some students need an interim environment coming back from a hospitalization. They might need a different environment for short-term while they're managing a recent trauma or tragedy. So we recently have used them, and it's been a great relationship to start, and I continue to, I think that will continue to grow. And then the other thing that I've done is just seek out the requirements for program approval and what that looks like in terms of if we were to create a whole separate different program that was outside of one of our schools, what that would look like within our district in comparison to having a special education program approval or having something that's more of an alternative program. Any questions about that one? Okay. Isn't this going to the next slide, David? Not working? What did you say? Oh, okay, thanks. Enter didn't work. Yeah, it did. Thank you. So the next one was engaging families in the community and supporting children's learning and wellbeing, increased parent engagement, understanding of the child's overall educational programming. So we have gathered information from the NHED survey data, we have parental involvement survey data, and then we've been having some informal meetings and looking at requests from parents. So we've been identifying topics. I also have met with a couple different departments in identifying things that they're getting requests from parents. So if parents are reaching out, what kind of questions or supports do they need? What would be helpful for parents as we're offering sessions? They talked a little bit earlier about us offering social emotional educational programming for parents around Open Circle, and so we had been doing that, but we're looking at expanding what that, what that really is. And I had worked previously with the Parent Information Center in the past. We co-led some trainings and some educational informational sessions for parents. So that would be our goal going to next year, to kind of co-lead some of those, but have some other offerings where we're calling on our experts from our school district, our school psychologists, our school counselors, our special education teachers. A lot of our survey data is very good when it comes to providing services to students with special education, but there are still some questions about, how do I know my child's making progress? What am I looking for? How can I see the progress? As, if you've ever sat in an IEP meeting, while they are, they can be lengthy at the same time, there's a lot of people around the table, the process could still be confusing. And so we'd like to create some opportunities to kind of pick a topic and just dive into that so that when parents come into a meeting, they sort of understand what we're talking about a little bit easier, and they feel like they can engage and be part of the process in a different way.
Catherine, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
The NHED survey, what is that, what does it ask?
So there's many questions it asks. So it used to be a two-part, it used to be, and it hasn't, it's not going out this year, right? No, it's not going out. So, and so the commissioner had started the NHED survey, we had to send it out, and then a part of that is if you were a parent of a child with an IEP, you had an extra section to fill out, and now that survey is no longer being sent out. And the parent engagement involvement survey through the Bureau of Student Services, student support, special education, is sending out the parent involvement survey, which they send out every year, which is required to meet the, the requirements of the Office of Special Education Programs in Washington, DC. So we take information from that and ask questions about involvement, and do you understand if your child is making progress? Do you attend the meetings? Like, there's some very basic things, and it dives into sort of an overall understanding. So we gather information from that to sort of get the pulse on what are parents looking for, so we're offering sessions that are meaningful. And then the last one I had was promote a professional culture that prioritizes growth, collaboration, and belonging to meet the needs of all learners. The goal was students will meet their individualized education goals to make progress and access a general education curriculum. We talked about a few different things in this this year. So we're looking at identifying evidence-based programs for math instruction. This is the, one of the harder areas to provide direct instruction, and we have a plethora of methodology and programs in reading, and we have lots of opportunities to provide professional development in reading because there's lots of people who do this. And so therefore, we are in a great place when it comes to making sure people have had enough reading training. So we looked at math instruction. We've ident, we've been identifying programming and starting to send individuals out to some different trainings to see what they think of it. So some special education teachers are attending some training again this summer to see, is this something that looks like we might like to expand in our district? They have already attended some training that Suzanne has offered for all teachers, which has been great, through the All Learners Network and OGAAP, which is also math programming methodology. And so they have already been part of that, but now we're looking at specializing it even more for students who really truly need a deep dive into learning math in a different way. So it's getting beyond supplementing or modifying current math programming and looking at, how do we provide a scope and sequence to a student who is struggling in the classroom, and at the same time, make sure they're accessing the classroom, but how do we also provide them those essential instructional, and essential, essential instructional methodology that is going to meet their individualized needs? In writing instruction, we started this year, we targeted the middle school because we were hearing from the middle school special education teachers that they were really needing some tools and strategies to provide writing instruction. The writing instruction in the classroom varies depending on the grade level and the teacher, so they were looking at, what are some tools that we can be using to really target math instruction for students who are struggling with the writing process? And so we have, again, identified some programming. Jen McGinnis, one of our special education teachers at the high school, worked collaboratively with Maria Nice, who is our, one of our consultants who works with us for MTSS, but she's also a reading specialist and a speech pathologist. And so they co-led eight sessions for special education teachers at the middle school in focusing just on writing instruction, starting with what is writing instruction, what is the process, and then started to dive a little bit into some programming that they can offer to students, whether it's in the program and embedded as part of their day, or if it's something that needs to happen in a pullout. So we started with middle school, and we plan to expand that. The feedback was really great. It was a small group of teachers, but also because, again, Suzanne is working on writing with regular education, like, it was a nice, I think there was a nice little marriage going on between what the reg ed teachers are being exposed to and then what special education is also being exposed to. So it was a great time to bring people together. So we'll continue that going into next year. And then looking at a professional development structure to support the needs. So as you know, when we're looking at professional development for special education, like, some of it is very expensive and it's very tailored. So we have to build a three to five-year plan to look at, how are we going to expand and grow our knowledge, but over time? And so I completed a survey with staff so we know, what have you been trained in? Some of the training for programming requires a certification or a certain amount of hours, so we've gathered all that information to look at, where are people at across the curriculum areas, math, reading, and writing, so that we can build that plan over the next three to five years. Any questions about that one? No? Here's your chance. All right, I'm out.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all your hard work this year. Okay. We'll move on to committee updates. Are there any committee updates, please?
The building committee met two weeks ago. Yeah, that sounds right. That was the week of all the meetings. And we met at Mas Way and got a tour of Mas Way, so thank you, Misty, for leading the tour, and thank you to Dave Tardy for showing us all the inner workings of the school. And we are meeting next Monday with Novo to talk about the facilities plans and the expansion.
Just to follow up, we had our launch of both our newly hired contract construction management firm, our civil engineer, and just with our partners at Novo Studio to kind of work, look at the work plan, talk about the timing, deliverables, and the stages of where we at in terms of schematic design, and I think we'll have a more report to the board following the presentation on, on June 9th.
Any other committee updates?
Not precisely a committee update, but I'll just tag along what Dr. Schaffs was saying earlier regarding legislation. It's been the crossover week, so you've got bills that are going back and forth between the House and the Senate. The ones that are applicable to the school district include the cell phone ban, which is SB 206 and HB 781. There is a new amendment on the Senate bill that would make it so it's just giving it to the school district that they're requiring a policy, which is related to what Suzanne was presenting at the last meeting, which would be the personally better option because we already have our cell phone policy and have more flexibility that way, but the House bill is still the other way. So ultimately, we'll have to see how that goes. There is universal vouchers, both the Senate and the House version, and we'll see what happens with that. My estimation is that will pass. So... So that will mean that vouchers will be available to every New Hampshire family regardless of income, which will have a financial impact on the district. And then there's SB 72, which is the same thing as HB 10, which is a parental bill of rights, which does some weird things for teachers in the district to inquire, inquiring mandatory reporting, including of like student relationships. So that one would also might be a challenge for teachers with student confidentiality, which is also related to SB 96, which is what you could call forced outing bill by the school district if you had a student who is gender questioning that forces the school district to state this to the parent. So that actually will affect some things as well. So there's a lot of things that are going on and we'll see what happens. Ultimately, if they, if they pass without amendment, then it goes to the governor's desk. If there is an amendment with either bill, then it has to be reconciled and then it'll end up going to the governor's desk. So a lot of things happening in that one that will be affecting the district financially would be a huge one. And Dr. Scheps, related to the new thing that happened today that I hadn't known about yet. I knew about the open enrollment, but one of the things that's been happening a lot at this session is that bills that were separate have been added on to other bills as non-German amendments, which means they're completely unrelated to the bill. So they get tacked on to there and suddenly you're having to look at it there, too. So some of these bills have actually been presented in three different ways, independently as an amendment and tacked into the budget. So it's been complicated to watch. So I'll keep us abreast. A lot of these hearings are tomorrow at both House and the Senate level. So there'll be some interesting policy things that the school district will have to work with moving forward.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. We appreciate it. Any other committee updates? Okay. We'll move on to public comments. Is anyone here for a public comment? Okay, thank you. We'll move to closing actions. Future meeting dates, our June 18th is the last meeting of this school year. When the school year rolls over on July 1st, our first meeting of the next year will be July 23rd, which is a, I think, the fourth Thursday in July, not the third Thursday. Yes, so just on your calendars. The first Wednesday in July, we will take off. That's traditional. The third Thursday, we've pushed that meeting to the fourth Thursday, the 23rd. And then another reminder that the graduation has been moved to the Woodmore Center at UNH. The doors will open at 8:00 PM and the ceremony will begin at 8:30 PM at the Woodmore Center. Okay, we'll move now to the first non-public session. I'd like to make a motion to move to a non-public session under RSA 91A 32C, the discussion of matters likely to adversely affect the reputation of a person other than a member of the school board. Can I have a second? Sean, thank you. And a roll call vote, please.
Renee Bennett, yes.
Gianna Jolcy, yes.
Matt Bacon, yes.
Heather Smith, yes.
Denise Day, yes.
Sean Harrison, yes.
All right, thank you very much.